Six thirty P M, Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty five. The openings act is posted on the basketball and council chairs. Your call, Sarah. Tyler? Green? You stand for the pledge of allegiance?
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number two, approval of minutes for previous meetings. February eleventh, the regular council meeting is February twenty seventh. Special meeting to discuss the general liability insurance. Any questions?
I move to accept the minutes of February eleventh, February twenty seven meetings as presented.
Second. Sarah? Alan? Green?
Aye.
Jordan? Claims and payroll. Any questions on claims and payroll?
I move that we accept the claims and payroll as presented.
Second. Sarah? Alex? Green?
Aye.
Four reports, manner of meeting. Oh, is he on there now?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Green. Number five, discussion audit fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Kyle Overkirk from AMGO.
All right, try it on. Do you have your screen, Courtney, or is it easier just to? Do you have the handout?
They all have the handout, so whatever works best for you.
All right, sounds good. I will just go over the handout. I apologize for the stuff not getting up there. Can't trust the mail, I guess, that's what we're telling you. So I'm going to go over the audit. The main thing I'm going to talk about is the benchmarking stuff. So audit itself, just always point out, we're providing an opinion. It's an unmodified opinion. Effectively, everything's presented fairly, no material in the statements. On the modified cash basis for our government funds, our cool basis for everything else. Plainview Manor, your nursing home is included in these audited financial statements. We do not audit them, so there is a statement to that fact midway on that first page that you have. I always just like to point out that next page, responsibilities of management and auditor's responsibilities. You know, I'm not going to read them to you, but just always, you know, our only control deficiency is segregation of duties. You know, Courtney and those in office can handle transactions start to finish. And that's where, you know, you guys kind of come in as management or counsel. Your end is there as that last line of defense, question things as they arise. You know, just never ask, don't be hesitant to ask that question is always my biggest thing. And then our auditor responsibilities, you know, we're maintaining that skepticism, kind of identifying the risk and doing everything. The common misnomer is that an audit is designed to detect fraud. And it's not, it helps deter, it helps prevent, but it's not designed to detect fraud. And so that's where, you know, both the combination of both of us kind of come into play in order to help, you know, kind of deter that as we go forward. Jumping into the financials a little bit, once you get that full copy, the M and A, if you're going to read one section of the audit, read that section. The one thing I'll point out on page ten here is our sources of revenue. So this is our governmental activities. Effectively, you guys have three main sources of revenue, property tax, sales tax, and then state allocation coming in. You can see operating grants, those are great when we get them. And last year, twenty twenty three, was a much bigger year for operating grants than twenty twenty four. But you can see those three sources of revenue I talked about make up close to seventy, almost eighty percent of our revenues for our governmental funds. So effectively, non fee-for-service revenues when you look at everything. Flipping then to the next page that I had in the handout, capital side of things, pretty quiet for the year. You guys had Dodge Durango, cement car, video, and computers, and then the purchase of the North Pine property. So pretty minimal when we look at the capital side of things. Factors for next year, flipping to the next page. So the current year that you're operating in right now, some of this stuff has already been completed, but just kind of happened after September thirtieth. Property tax, you increased thirty seven thousand dollars. You're asking it eight point eight percent. And it's clearly due to a valuation increase. And we'll look here when I get to benchmarking how effectively important that is with everything. Contractual commitments on the paving project for forty thousand outstanding, some paving and drainage improvements, and then a loader that was in October. So some big numbers there. Page fifteen, I'll just point out, we have component units hanging out there. There's a separate audit for Plainview Manor. I would reference you to that. That has more information in it than this audit report is going to have. But in addition to Plainview Manor, you guys do have a library foundation that's out there. So I just always like to point that out, really not anything that I'm going to hit on more than that, but I do just like to point out that we have that library foundation hanging out there. In addition, on this page, they show up here, but they're going to help pay for some of those projects that are coming down the pipeline or that guy issued in the current year with the debt. There is that assessments receivable for four hundred thirteen thousand dollars at year end that will come in, and that's going to help pay some of that debt service there. So that's one of the spots that it shows up here, but I just wanted to point that out. Flipping in page sixteen, that minus one point one eight million dollar number, that's on the second page of the handout. I always like to point that out. That is effectively how much it takes to operate the governmental activities. So our street, our park, our police, everything that is not electric, water, sewer, or trash. That's how much it takes to operate, that we don't pass on in a fee-for-service arrangement, or we don't get grants or contributions for. So that's where those property taxes, sales tax, our state allocation, that's where those other numbers come into play down below there, as you can see. And after we got all those in this year, we had the increase of a hundred and two thousand dollars. You can see that business type activities had a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase. So overall, you know, positive there on that side. I will touch base here on the restatement. We do have a restatement this year for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So the IRP, there was a little bit of confusion. We didn't realize that it was a loan that you guys were actually going to have to repay. We were under the impression that it was a grant. So the IRP loan, we had to restate for the prior advances of a hundred and twenty five thousand that will get repaid in future years. But we kind of had an interest payment come up there, and that's when we kind of determined that we had kind of misunderstood that program a little bit. So that's why that restatement's there. Page seventeen, then that next page, general fund, a million dollars of total cash. And you can see we actually have positive fund balance of three hundred forty eight thousand dollars. We got some other, you know, restricted funds hanging out there, but we do have positive unassigned cash. I'll hit on that more here a little bit when we get to benchmarking. You can see our other funds there, street, economic development, debt service. And then we have some other ones in the back, some sales tax restricted for Plainview Manor, our housing, CDBG type funds, and the keynote funds that are hanging out there. So overall, you know, we really only have that three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars that is at city council's discretion when we look at all of our governmental funds. You can see every other one of those funds is restricted for a specific purpose. So just something to point out there, once again, nothing too big. Flipping into that next page, you can see our general fund had a positive increase of a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars during the year. So that's good to see there. Street fund had a decrease of a hundred and thirty two thousand. Once again, no concerns there about just kind of the ebb and flow. Street projects are expensive. And so, you know, that's just kind of the way those are going to work as they go through there. And then nothing else really too big to point out there. Page twenty two, our enterprise funds, our utilities, everything except the electric had operating income. Electric's a little bit skewed, kind of just allocation a little bit since we're not really operating our own service anymore, just a franchise piece. So that's not as concerning there, just kind of how we're allocating expenses. But pretty strong operating incomes across the board there when we look at everything. Flipping back then, I flip back to the footnotes and to your additional handout there. I just always like to point out, you guys have four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars of notes hanging out there in the form of, they'll be a forty notes, the IRP notes, and some housing loans at year end. That information's in there, individual ones, as we kind of point out. But nothing really too big to point out there. I just wanted to make note of that, that hey, we do have a bunch of loans that are hanging out there to individual businesses. But that's a good thing. That helps kind of develop the community. That next few pages, really nothing too big there, just kind of showing where we're at. Debt wise, our governmental activities has debt of one point three million. Page forty eight showing that IRP, relending program. We have two hundred and sixty three thousand advanced at year end of the maximum four hundred thousand there. It is principal only payments through twenty fifty on that side of things and one percent interest for the first three years. No interest after that. So pretty generous terms there on that side of things, so a good thing there. But just, once again, getting that on the books as debt because we do have to repay that. That next page, you guys are pretty much down to not a lot of debt currently in our utility funds. We have the one N E note hanging out there that matures in twenty twenty eight. And then we have a freightliner case equipment note that matures in twenty twenty seven at year end there. And then flipping to that next page of everything, a lot of subsequent events that happened after year end. A lot of IRP notes getting approved there. Bid on the remodel of the former commuter room for the police station. And then a bid for Miller and Associates for the well installation for two hundred and thirty four thousand on that next page. Obviously, you guys are aware of the state auditor findings in regards to Plainview Manor, and just reference that there on that side of things. From there, I already kind of hit on the segregation and duties. So any questions on the audit itself before I jump into benchmarking? Okay, I will jump into benchmarking. And so these are the two pages that have pretty much a full ton of numbers. And so this is something that our firm does. I think we have maybe a few new council members. But this is just something that we do that kind of helps compare you guys to other communities across the state. So when we are comparing the city of Plainview, we're comparing you, trying to compare you apples to apples. And the only way to do that is kind of on a per person basis. So we're comparing you to other communities, one to three thousand population across the state of Nebraska. And for pretty much everything on here, other than number four, we are comparing you to the whole state for the most part. Number four, we're just comparing you to ones that we audit because we feel comfortable with where the numbers are getting allocated and coded. And so when we're talking that number four there, it's still a pretty sizable group. We audit about ninety cities and villages across the state. That one to three thousand is about thirty five of those, so a pretty sizable chunk when we look at that. So we're comparing you pretty good. So once again, we're looking at the current year audit numbers. And so valuation's a huge driver of everything. Your guys' valuation did take a pretty good jump in the current year that we're auditing to seventy five million, but behind the peer group still of a hundred and fifteen million. And when we look at that on a per person basis, we're about sixteen thousand dollars per person short in valuation compared to other communities your size. So I did state that, you know, we had a pretty sizable valuation increase of seven percent. Seven percent onto that current valuation basis really still not going to get us to even the average of a peer group. So, you know, once again, we'd rather have the valuation, but at least we are kind of seeing a trickle up there. When we look at everything, you can see that historical trend, you know, twenty twenty, you guys were at thirty seven thousand dollars of valuation per resident. You're now at fifty eight thousand. So obviously, we've seen that, everyone, you know, seen that in their property tax bills. But back then in twenty twenty, you guys were quite a ways behind that peer group. You're kind of closing that gap now, but we're getting a little bit closer. Unrestricted net position, honestly, no concerns here. I kind of get out that your governmental activities, you guys just have a lot of restricted funds. That doesn't mean anything, but that's helping skew and push that number down a little bit. So no concerns there. Sources of revenue, you can see we have the grants and contributions. Those kind of ebb and flow, but you guys are staying pretty strong and pretty close to that peer group average there. Property taxes, you know, you're quite a bit higher than the peer group. This is just purely based on collection. So I'm going to flip into the second page, and this is where our levy rates come in at number eight. So overall, our levy rate is based on our valuation. We're levying sixty cents. The peer group's levy in fifty five. You can see there, our fifty cents of levy compared to the peer group's forty three cents of levy is generating the exact same amount of property tax per person. So effectively, we're having to have a higher levy rate to get the same taxes that other communities are getting just due to that valuation base. So that just kind of shows you, it's ironic that it worked out exactly to the same, you know, that seven cents difference there, but it's easy to see that our seven cent general fund levy is effectively, due to our valuation, generating the same property tax as the forty three cent levy in that peer group or that statewide side of things. Then when I flip back to the front page, state allocation, you can see we're quite a bit higher than the peer group, but we did have a little bit of a dip. And part of that is as we go down into number three, our municipal equalization decrease. Obviously, you can see our valuation increased year over year. So as our valuation increases, our municipal equalization's going to decrease there. Obviously, we have control over our levy. We don't have control over what municipal equalization can be. So that's why we like to sometimes kind of have a little bit of control there. Highway allocation, you can see a little bit higher than peer group. Once again, this is purely based on lane miles. There's really nothing you guys can do to control that. Sales tax, pointing out here, peer group, you guys do lay a little bit behind here. Part of that is some of these other communities have a little bit higher sales tax levy, but you guys can see there, year over year from twenty three to twenty four, we did have a little bit of dip in sales tax. So once again, nothing concerning, just kind of something to monitor. You know, we are still quite a bit higher per person than we were back in twenty twenty during those COVID years when we kind of saw that spike come through. Governmental expenses at number four, I just always like to point out, but these are just kind of where other people are spending money. You have to do what makes sense to your community, how you want to spend it. But you can kind of see where you stack up with peer group. You're a little bit higher than the peer group in the police side of things. The park is a little bit higher this year than the peer group, a quite a bit higher than the prior years. No concern here. These are just non-capitalized repairs that you actually received grant funding for. So effectively, they were in and out, but we're really only looking at expenses here, so they get skewed. Same way, those, we had some, a little bit bigger repairs there. So once again, nothing concerning when we look at it, but that's why those are quite a bit higher than the prior years. But everything else kind of going through there, really nothing too concerning. Geo side of things, you guys are in good shape for your debt, your valuation. Unassigned fund balance, we're actually above where we would recommend you would be at from unassigned fund balance cash flow wise. Usually, we recommend that three to four months cash reserve. You guys are hovering in that a little over four months cash reserve. So you can see a long ways away from the four months deficit that we had five years ago. So it hasn't been without pains there, but, you know, we've got there and kind of turned that deficit around and kind of got to where we would like to be from a cash reserve standpoint in the general fund. So that's great there. Moving then to that next page, street cash reserve, really nothing concerning there on that side of things. Like I said, we'll see those ebbs and flows as the taxes and those expenses go out the door. I've already hit on that one. Depreciable capital assets, once again, you can see our utilities were getting a little bit lower than that thirty five percent. And that's usually when we start seeing potential needs for major capital improvements. Historically, we've kind of hovered right in that thirty percent, so we've been doing some to kind of maintain that. But I know there's probably some major projects coming down the pipeline, just based on experience, you know, working with cities and then also talking with city staff there. Operating income, you know, I'm not putting a lot of stock in the general fund, but you can see the other ones there, the water sewer sanitation, all quite a bit higher than our recommended fifteen percent. Once again, this is just a guideline. It doesn't mean we're overcharging citizens because every water system, every sewer system, community by community, has different needs effectively. And if we're going to have some major capital improvements coming down the pipeline, that prevents the unfortunate side effects sometimes that we see that, hey, we got to raise rates twenty percent. It's like, kind of, we prevent that side of things there. So we're in good shape there. Debt coverage ratio, we're in very good shape. And then very last, cash reserves, where should we be versus where we are? Effectively, operating, you know, we said we're in good shape on unaside side of things, you know, with replacement reserves and kind of a little bit more cushion in the operating reserve. We would recommend you're probably at about four seventy five. You're at three forty eight. You can see that's higher than we've ever been since I started working with the city, probably, I think it's been seven, eight years ago now. It might even have been longer than that. But overall, you know, we're in really good shape there. Obviously, some capital needs may be arising, so we just got to keep that in mind. And then business type activities, we're in really good shape from an operating reserve standpoint. But you can see we have one point three five million built in there for potential replacement reserve for capital needs. So, you know, we're a little bit short overall there. Once again, not huge concerns. It just means we don't have the cash, so we're probably going to have to up in debt, which, as I stated, you guys are fairly minimal on the debt side of things in the utility fund. So really no big concerns there. So, you know, overall, I think, I would say we're in the best financial position the city can get in, probably since we started auditing as a firm. So that's, that's great to be able to stay there on that side of things. And so it's just going to be kind of continuing down that road and, you know, kind of make sure that we kind of maintain that fiscal management going forward so we, you know, don't fall backwards. Any questions?
Can you get count?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I think we're good.
Nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have a good night.
Back to reports, manner of meeting.
So since the last meeting, we've had two board meetings. Some things that were discussed on the February twenty sixth meeting, provided some staff updates that we had. We talked about the architect update after our conversation with the city council. Some discussions between Clarkson, Enberson, and CNBA, which is on your agenda later for tonight. And then we talked about the board is asking that department heads be placed on the agenda for rotating through for the board meeting, so we're going to work on that. They are looking at a grievance policy and making sure that the chain of command is followed and updating any other changes regarding that. We did discuss time change with the meeting again, but that kind of kind of tabled itself again. And then I did report that on two eighteen, we self-reported a complaint survey. So when a resident leaves the property that we're not aware of, or we don't have our eyes on them at all times, so we got my assisted living hallway there at the facility there. And so once they cross a certain line, that's now assisted living. The bath house is located on that side, and so at times there's a white door that's open. And that resident got through that door because it was open and kept walking past this magical line. And so due to the magic line getting passed, we had to turn it in and report on ourselves that the resident basically eloped type thing. The staff were able to bring that resident back. They just didn't have eyes on it all the time, so then that's considered elopement. So the state did come out, they reviewed everything that we had. It was non-sustentiated, which means no added fines or anything like that. Just really sees the difficulty that we currently have with the situation, how the assisted living was attached on years ago. We've kind of reached out to New Wonder Guards and different things like that. There's just a lot of things up in the air. So at this time, that door will remain closed at all times and locked. The problem is the bath house is located over there, and we got some offices over there that they are missing some of the action on the nursing home side at times. But we're working through those processes. Then when we met again, we also discussed some information that Kyle had presented to us. And then we did have a correction with the architect construction based on their conversation and what they get, provided they decided to affect the other architect. And then I provided them a bid with window coverings for the dining room because the sun is coming in to the resident's eyes right now. And so they accepted a bid from, it's not called Magnolia, but it's part of Magnolia.
Questions for the meeting?
So the door, they go through the door, they measure lines after, is that what it's saying?
Pass the bath house and then pass an office.
I think it happened a couple of years ago, too. It happened a couple of years ago. It's just a...
I was just thinking like, we have, we have a little, like a little tether in our office, and it keeps all people out in a thousand things, so you can see through it, if that's not really...
The assisted living come to the other side a lot to do activities and things, yeah.
So if that door's locked, how do they get back and forth?
There's a, on the, from the assisted living over, there, you just can open it from the nursing home over.
The assisted living resident has to do it? Or the staff has to do it for them?
Either one. It's, it's posted for those that commendedly can figure out where it's posted.
But they never leave the facility, right? They don't remember what, it doesn't allow them to go outside, they're still in your facility, right?
Yes, they got to the end of the assisted living door.
And they could go out.
They could go out, yes. And we've had that, like Tyler said, they went out the front door before, and so...
I'm sure that this was...
Easy.
Because when we were out there doing interviews, there was this buzzer and a lot of people running, so...
Well, a lot of paperwork and a lot of time. And, I mean, just a week after, about a week after, a resident cut their wonder guard off twice. And so they got out too, to the front door, and, you know, so we had to turn that one in also. But that one, we think we got something figured out magically. We'll see, there's Mark.
I think regarding the time of the meeting, you guys need to actually vote on it because there wasn't really a vote done.
I'll bring that up to Jim.
Thanks, Julie. Please chief Christie.
February was a little bit busier than January. We had a whole walk in six traffic stop, so, you know, slow down a bit. But because it was a little bit slower, it allowed me to get some stuff done in my office. I will tell you that I had, I was assigned an audit last November. I did not read the fine print, and it said, once I logged in and got my username, they would assign me the audit. Well, I failed to read that part, so I'm like, sweet, I'm a credit, I'm not a credit, I don't have to do it. Well, state control, in fact, contacted me, started to get that done, so I'll be working on that probably the rest of the week. Angela will be leaving for firearms instructor course on March thirtieth through April fourth. And then I want to say that I had to take my vehicle into Saney's because, I actually took it to Jim Johnson because I kept, battery kept dying on it every time. As a matter of fact, I looked what was going on the call, couldn't get it started, so I wasted quite a bit of time trying to get my vehicle up and running to go to a call, and that's not real good. The thing that was confusing to me is it was a new battery. I bought it in Jan or July of last year, but I have to jumpstart my vehicle like twice a month. And I'm like, something's, there's something pulling from that battery. So I took it to Jim because the last time that I jumped it was that last cold snap. But I don't know what happened, but when I turned it on, the heater kept running. I couldn't control the radio, my in-car camera wasn't working. I was like, what the hell? So I took it over to Jim. Jim looked at it, said that he, the ignition fuse is blown, it's probably something internal, which it was. It was the, they called it the body control modular, otherwise known as a PCM. So I took it to Mike Saney, and he got it fixed. So it's going to cost me about a thousand dollars to get that bill paid, and I'll get that turned into court music. But everything's up and running now, good to go. New office should be done completely for the next couple of weeks. There's a couple of things that Jeremy and I talked about today that I'm going to have Seth go look at because on the... that I'm gonna have Seth go look at, cause on the north wall in my office, there was some, uh, when they painted, some of the paper from, I believe it was the drywall, did not come off and they painted over it, so it's like the paper's still there, so the paper, if I lift it, it's just gonna look like crap again, so I'll talk to Seth tomorrow and see if he can take a look at that, get that fixed. Um, nuisance properties, so we had several houses on South King. When, I drove by the front of them today, and they, they're doing quite a bit of work on them. I did not look in the back, Andrew was gonna do that, and he had to go on a call, so he didn't get a chance to look at them today, but it's two eleven South King, two thirteen South King, and three oh one South King. Their abatement date is our three summit team, and I don't think we're gonna have to abate cause they're really coming along. Um, Rose Stark, two eleven East Ellsworth, I did, I have not been by there. Andrew, again, was gonna go take a look at it today, and has not had a chance to view it before the meeting. I think we're probably gonna have to pressure her just a little bit to get that cleaned up, cause it's not moving along very quickly. Her abatement date is three eighteen. Um, Bob, I did get hold of the renters at two, it's, let's see here, uh, two fourteen South Pine, the pine wood couches were, they did get them moved, so they're not back there. Um, Keel Property, so we messed that up initially, and we did the reservice, however, on Mike, we did not get Brenda served. Andrew finally got Brenda served, March, no, February, what date is that?
It was March, I have it on my log.
Um, I think it was, uh, twelve, February twelfth, I believe. So, I don't know, I don't have the date, anyhow, she has until tomorrow to appeal. If she doesn't get the appeal done, after speaking with Kyle, we're gonna honor the appeal that Mike turned in when we initially started the process. Um, once the date tomorrow comes and goes, Kyle's gonna send out the notice for hearing, and then we'll send out the hearing date, and then they'll have the hearing review, and then we'll move forward from there. If it doesn't happen that way, then the abatement date is April second. Let's see, I wanna talk to you about the garage across from Mary's. It's zoned commercially, however, that doesn't give you the right to keep the nuisance property. The thing with the vehicles is they come and go every day, something new, so we can't really say anything about that, but there's a bunch of stuff that they keep around in front of the building, so we will probably eventually look at that and the nuisance also and get them served. Uh, we have a car on top of the garage now, so if you guys are not aware of that, um, I just don't know.
Waiting for it to fall through.
Yeah. Um, we're also gonna take a look at Henderson's property again, at two twenty-one South Hurst Street, as we start to accumulate a lot of stuff again, so we'll revisit, revisit that. And then during public comment, there's some things I wanna talk to you about, not pertaining to police matter, but something in the community, so, that's what I've got. Yes, ma'am?
Andrew, that, uh, car that's on South Pine that has a blue tarp over it still needs to be moved, just covering up junk, still is junk.
No, uh, the car cover.
Is it tarp, it's a white?
Yeah, we'll talk to them, they have to have a nice car cover on it, so that's what we'll do.
Huh? It isn't, it's just a car.
I said we'll have to talk to them about giving them.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, yeah, okay.
We've talked to them before.
Yeah.
We'll do it again, we'll remove the car, we'll move the car. I mean, I don't know if we'll have to go through the nuisance again, I'm not sure. If we, since we have a bait or they, they clean the property yet, by the abatement date, we have to go through that process.
Yes, they did a good job, I'm not saying that, they just didn't complete it, yeah.
Hard, so, do you have any questions for me?
Thinking about it, nice, thank you. To them, remember?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can report positive.
Absolutely. I do.
Do you? Glad you did that.
Nothing, you good?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Can you go to number eight for the public hearing at seven?
Oh. Jump down on Ray, public hearing, second public hearing, notice for CDBG, DTR dash zero zero five, motion to open a public hearing.
Is that motion?
Second. Sarah. Alan. Green. Joey.
Okay, so this is, we're starting the process now of closing out the DTR grant, which is actually four years to the date from when we started taking applications, so that's quite convenient, so. Um, and all I have to do is read these two paragraphs, and then we're done, so.
Good job.
Uh, the city of Plainview was awarded CDBG downtown, downtown revitalization funds of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, of which four hundred and seventy-five thousand were used for rehabilitation of privately owned commercial buildings, twenty-five thousand for clearance and demolition in Plainview, Nebraska, Pierce County, Nebraska. Twenty-five thousand was awarded for grant administration, and ten thousand was awarded for construction management. The city of Plainview has provided the required match of a hundred thousand dollars for the DTR project activities. Project activities included the rehabilitation of privately owned commercial buildings and clearance and demolition. To date, two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents have been used for commercial rehabilitation, twelve thousand sixteen dollars for clearance and demo, six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-five cents has been used for construction management, and twenty-five thousand has been used for general administration of the grant. No persons, businesses, or farms were displaced as a result of CDBG activities.
Any questions?
Good job.
Okay.
No questions? Okay, motion to come out of public hearing?
I'll make that motion to come out of public hearing.
Second. Sarah. David.
Aye.
Green. Aye. Okay, now economic development.
I don't have much, um, still working with business in town on getting some funding for construction essentially of a new building, so, um, and I would like to bring going forward, once the police get to move out of their building and cross the street, I have some ideas for what I would like to do with the old police station. I know in the past, we talked about, um, like a co-share space that could be used for meetings for different groups, or, you know, our boards wanted to use it for meetings, just a smaller area instead of maybe just using the library, and I think that would be a great place to maybe put something. You could have a designated spot to have smaller meetings, or somebody to use it for their work or whatever, just to maybe run it out for the day. I mean, it would take some work to get it going, but I don't wanna see that building just sit there and not get used, so something to look at going, going forward, so. And I don't have anything else for you right now, so.
Okay, city superintendent, thank you, partner.
Uh, there you see what we've done so far for the month, um, we're currently working on Third Street for a sewer, so we'll see how much snow is here next week.
Attack your mouth, I don't, just depends on which weather station you're in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, city attorney Kyle, anything for now, Kyle?
Um, I think most of my contributions will be during the GNIs, but I didn't wanna report that, uh, the asylum proposal that the council approved in February regarding, uh, heart litigation, uh, was filed pursuant to some of the rudiments, so just waiting for them to get sold, and then we'll get paid our principal on the note.
That's good. Okay, down to number six, discussion ordinance, number one zero zero six, leave law ordinance.
We kinda went over all these last month, really kinda have to do them, cause they're a lot, and also, I'll just put them in a nice, nice, convenient, uh, summary for you.
Do you want a motion to accept this?
Yeah.
I submit a vote to accept ordinance number one zero zero six, for the adoption supplement to the college ordinance, it's for the city of Plainview.
Second.
Second.
Sarah. David. Green. Green.
Aye.
Miss counsel, she did the second and third reading. Alan.
I make a motion to dismiss second and third reading.
Second.
Second.
Sarah. David.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Joey.
Number seven, discussion action, open and possibly approved bids to Haley and Dewey transfer station.
Seems like we just did that.
I know I does.
In a year.
Yeah.
Lot of pressure.
Yes, the eyes are on me.
I thought last year we were gonna get it, let it open there.
Yeah, I just told Green, I was ready. Okay, this is from Lyle and Velter, city of Plainview, I submit a bid of one thousand and three dollars for seventeen acres more or less in section three twenty-four, twenty-seven dash four. This bid is for the parcel of the old lagoon ground next to the transfer station. The bid is for the twenty twenty-five growing season. Like Johnny Carson just.
What he used to do. I never stayed up that long.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's what I remember.
Yes, I think it's from Tim Johnston, is that it?
Johnston.
Okay.
Uh, I, Tim Johnston, give a bid of one thousand two hundred and one dollars and one cent for the nine acres of hay ground. Is that the other?
That's a lagoon, yeah.
This is also from Nebraska, New Lea. This is from Trenton Tar, I Trenton Tar bid one, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars an acre for nine more or less acres of hay ground at the New Lea.
You said one twenty-seven?
One twenty-seven times nine.
Counselor said one forty-five, or one thirty-three, forty-five.
Eleven forty-three. On second, two, Jerry?
Eleven forty-three, it's all.
Eleven forty-three. Well, that's higher than...
That's lower.
Lower.
No, it's twelve oh one oh one.
Oh, gotcha.
Nothing for the transfer station?
Yeah, Lyles was.
Lyles was.
Yep. Just had one for the transfer, and two for the...
That was the one thousand three dollars.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept Lyle and Velter bid for one thousand three dollars for the seventeen acres.
Second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Alan.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
I make a motion to accept Tim Johnston's, uh, bid for twelve hundred one dollars and one cent for the, um, lagoon.
Second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
David. Green.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number nine. National Library Week, April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Here we go. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources, while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success, success. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. Whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore about censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. Whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now therefore, be it resolved that I have opted for the time April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five, as National Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the library, large resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community.
You think that?
Yeah. Take your drink. Number ten, proclamation, public transit week, April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Nebraska Public Transportation Week has been declared for April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the date was chosen to honor the public transportation systems across Nebraska, including the local system better known as the Plainview Handyman. And whereas public transportation systems across the state of Nebraska are celebrating public transportation during this timeframe. And whereas every year, thousands of Nebraska citizens are able to participate in using public transportation to help them remain independent. And whereas Plainview has continued to support the use of public transportation throughout the year. And whereas Plainview recognizes the hard work and dedication that the city staff, and especially the drivers, do to help make Plainview Handyman service an integral part of the lives of many residents in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Plainview, I, Robert Smith, do hereby issue this proclamation to celebrate public transportation, and do hereby declare April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five to be public transportation.
Thirty fifty cents off the rise of the library.
There you go. Number eleven, discussion action resolution number seven one seven, Handyman application, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, two years is up for our funding for the Handyman, so, uh, going through the process of doing, requesting funds from them. I did request to budget out for a new van for twenty twenty-six, so they did put that into the budget that I'm asking them for funding for, but they just think the city council's blessing to go ahead and submit that to them, so just every year, we have to do this in order to get federal funding, so I have to send it by the twenty-first of March, so, better.
That would be nice, cause ours is showing some story.
Yeah, so, and I think he priced me out a new one, close to eighty thousand dollars for something similar to what we have now.
And our share is in eleven?
Our share is only, what is it, ten, ten percent?
Yeah.
So, and then last time we did that, we used keynote funding, actually paid up ten percent, so, um, we'll, we'll hopefully.
What was our other one, two thousand and twelve?
We have two thousand and eleven right now, it's the first one, it's the one we've had, so.
It's got some repairs.
Got some repairs, I mean, not a lot of, not a ton of miles, but it's, it's shown its age, so.
No worries, getting excited about getting a new one.
I know. Every day.
He's most excited about automatic door.
Yeah.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, it would be. Okay, I'll make a motion for resolution number seven one seven.
I make a motion to approve resolution seven one seven, Handyman application, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Second.
Sarah. David.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Joey.
Number twelve, discussion action, resolution number seven one eight, street closures, Lincoln Avenue for preview school activities.
Uh, Mr. Schmidt sent me the list of all track meets and football games through the end of the year, so you guys can approve having that street closed down at those times.
Motion to approve resolution seven one eight.
Second.
I'll second.
Sarah. David.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Joey.
Number thirteen, discussion action approval to advertise for bids for paving of Lincoln Avenue and Pine Street.
Um, it's just been going on for a while now, it's in the context of the school, um, we just met Monday, finalized, we're doing some walkthrough plans, um, we did some revisions, we'll send us a new draft on Friday, but then we'll go up for bids, uh, then comes back, and in April, we'll be able to actually sit down, and that's where we can decide how much money it is, do we proceed or do we not? So this is just the process, we've already, we're in contract with forces, costs us no money, and this is the next step to see how much it actually gonna cost to get it done, so. He's, he's, he thinks there's, there'll be at least hopefully a few bids that'll go in streets, or, you know, some truck drivers are gonna look at it, so that's good. Seems to be over a hundred, so.
So even with the revision still out there, we can approve to advertise for bids?
Yep, yep.
I'll make a motion, motion to approve to advertise for bids for paving of Lincoln Avenue and Pine Street?
Second?
I'll second.
Sarah? Carter?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Number fourteen, Discussion Action Approval of Mayor and Board Recommendation for Architectural Firm.
Um, so again, in my packet, or I handed out earlier tonight, um, your standard form of agreement, this one is from the Clark Inversion. Um, and so after the board reviewed the last council and rewatched and things like that, that is the company they picked. Um, that company, when they were here, was three to four million, is a ballpark, and we understand it's a ballpark, and the other one was ten million, a ballpark on both of them. Um, so Tim is R.I.P.P., is who I've been working with, and so this would be his standard form of agreement at this time. Um, since there is no budget set at this time, because we're all in the planning process, um, they're looking at eight point two five percent, um, for their kind of those fees in there. Um, there's kind of four steps he said we would go through if this is what we want to proceed on with, the systematic design. So like the development, sitting back down with the team at the facility, any board members, any council members, what are the wishes? And what kind of budget are we kind of looking for then going forward? Um, that would take a few weeks, he said time we'd sit down and be able to have those meetings. And then we'd have, um, construction documents, um, that's about a six-month process, um, then you have your bidding out. And then you've got your, um, custom, uh, construction administration fees in there, um, type thing. Couple things as a reminder, he did say at the meeting that they don't do a geotech or a site survey, they could refer us to somebody, but that's not anything part of their fees. Because of the dirt work and looking at the ground and things like that, so that is on top of this. Um, and I don't have any dollar amounts at all, what that even roughly would be. Uh, but again, this would just take the assisted living, kind of the old part, which has eight rooms, and put them back into long-term care. And then add on to the assisted living and add eight rooms on, also, also bringing laundry upstairs. It would add a dining room and a little bit of an office here or there. Um, the issue, I think the main issue that I keep talking about is the dirt work. It's not a cost a lot of dirt, bringing a lot of dirt, um, could get it to where it needs to be, or do we put a basement underneath, which then you're talking close to another million, you know, when you get all said and done with that. We've talked elevators up and down, um, an elevator roughly is seven hundred and fifty thousand, a personal opinion, and spend that up on the upstairs rather than, yeah, so that's just that. Um, obviously, I gave Kyle one of these too, it could be looked at, but at this time, the board has made their recommendation to you.
So, is there an upfront cost? I missed it, sorry.
They have a twenty-five thousand and then a.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
That's what we gotta say, because it, because they might do all the plans and then you might decide not to do it.
Not to do it, yes.
So twenty-five grand to start with.
Yep.
And then how far does point five grand get you? Like all the way to the bid process?
Um, he said that the systematic will get like ten percent of it used, the construction document will be fifty percent of it used, the bidding is five percent used, and then the construction administration is another twenty-five percent.
So all the way till the bid process?
Yeah.
Have you ever considered just doing the laundry building by itself for less than this point, till you get more money?
Uh, we have, the board did not discuss that for the fact of that we know going forward, private rooms is the desire and the wish for everybody not to be living with a roommate type thing. And so this was just an opportunity to continue with that kind of a dream, you know, that we want for this community.
It'll get more expensive down the road.
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Yep, yeah, approve it or not?
Uh, no, I think it looks good. Make a motion to approve the Mayor or Board Recommendation for Architectural Firm.
Second? Sarah? Carter?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordan? Okay, number fifteen. Discussion Action, Mayor and Administrator's Contract Effective Two One, twenty twenty-five.
I have some questions. Um, so Kyle, you have read over this. So some of my questions might be something that has to be in there legally that I still understand, so I'm not saying you're not doing your job, I'm just saying I don't know, okay? So I don't understand the first paragraph actually. When it's between the city of Plainview, Nebraska, doing business as Plainview Manor, Whispering Pines Assisted Living, they're bought, they're after the city. But then in, under the recitals, it says the management of the Plainview Manor and Whispering Pines Assisted Living thereafter called the Manor. Is it the city or the manor? It sounds like they're saying the same thing. Does doing business as change that concept?
No, the, the, the first, um, mention in the first paragraph is who the party is, whereas I think in the recital, when you're speaking about the manor, it's, it's talking about the, the facility. As opposed to a party to the agreement.
Okay.
So that whenever there'd be a reference to the building that the administrator's working at, I don't have to use that full name every time, it's the manor.
Cause there's some other places that look, you know, like down on two I, it just says travel and education be paid by the city. So the city at that point would be, who?
Well, it's, it's the city regardless, I mean, if you're talking about funds that are being withdrawn from a, a manor account, the, the city's the custodian of that. Even though the manor board has the authority to do some contractual work. Ultimately, you know, all the, the money routes through our purview, because they're just a component either for the city, but not a separate legal entity.
But they have their own checking account, and they pay their own bills.
Yeah, and, and that's what I mean is, if, if, uh, uh, a payment is made from a manor account, the entity that's paying them is the city, even though it's, it's a sub-account to the city that's dedicated for manor business.
Still confusing.
Okay.
So.
It's probably a higher level.
So then, like in number two, the compensation, the city shall compensate, provide benefits to administrators, so then that is pretty much the manor's kind of.
Correct.
I don't know why you can't say manor, I just don't know.
Well, because the manor isn't a.
The bill, manor's the building and the city is us, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, essentially, I mean, I wish that, um, well, I, I shouldn't say that, I wish this, but the, the way that'd be easier is if the manor was its own separate political subdivision, like a rural fire district or something like that. But they're, they're not, they're just, um, a subsidiary of us.
So the, the salary is one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents per year. I would have liked to, I would have liked to only see a three percent instead of an eight percent, uh, raise in annual, uh, pay stuff. At the end of the year of employment, the manor board will perform an annual review, it should be of the administrator. I suppose it's kind of a technical thing, but it should be, you're evaluating the administrator, not with the administrator about something else. Just a little technical thing, I think that they should set, should share the review with the city council, we can't make a decision without knowing what they think for evaluation was. Um, it almost sounds like to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, in number two C, that they will set the administrator's salary, do you, is this as assumed that she gets a increase in salary? Or just set means it can stay the same?
It could stay the same, um, so basically what this was doing is taking, uh, kind of the performance benchmarks that were used in the past and having those being considered for purposes of setting what the base salary rate would be for the next year. So, um, you know, the council's not bound, um, to increase, um, you can decrease, um, your base salary based on the same or, you know, increase. So it's just a matter of what everyone decides to do.
So based on the benchmarks, we'd have to see the evaluation, right? In order to make a judgment?
Yeah, I mean, just from a, a practical standpoint, you know, when, uh, it's easy to try to make a decision, um, it's probably better to have as much information as you can get. So.
Right to your contract, right?
What's that?
Using the criteria that's.
Yeah. And it, it's not, I shouldn't say it's not exhaustive, I mean, there could be other things that could be considered, it's just, I thought, to have a little continuity from the last contract to this contract, we'd use kind of those same benchmarks to consider.
Then full family health insurance, is that the same thing as we pay the premiums?
Correct.
And we just know that? That we just know that?
Yeah, cause the way that almost reads is like, you could, like, if she has, like, a five thousand dollar deductible, she could come up to us and say, well, according to this, you owe, you owe this too. Cause the way that almost reads, well, you have to put a premium in there?
Yeah, it, I would say that the, the way it's worded is you're paying the, the premium, not like a, are you saying like a deductible or the?
Yeah, I'm saying, the way it reads, you always have to specify what the city is paying, because otherwise, you're.
Um, so then a retirement plan in the conjure, the manor has, was up to five percent from the employer, so if that was based on the proposed salary, then that would be six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars added to her retirement every year. So I still, in my mind, cannot understand the difference between a salaried person versus people that are paid by the hour, that have a time card and then accumulate paid time off. You, as a salaried person, you would get your two weeks or whatever it says in there. And then isn't it up to the salaried person to alter that time put in, so it doesn't, it balances out to be forty hours a week, I'll say?
Are you saying like a, uh?
If I work ten hours today, tomorrow I'm only gonna work six. Or whatever I'm gonna work, what am I gonna work tomorrow? If I work eight hours a day, if I work ten hours today, it's two hours more than what would be required of me as a salaried person. So tomorrow I would only work six, cause I would alternate or adjust the hours worked so it, I don't have overtime.
That sounds kind of like a flex time arrangement, that I don't like the, the statement other places use, um.
So Dana Cole, I asked him what the difference between that, and they said, assumed that the salaried people adjust their time accordingly.
Okay, what, what I was kind of getting at with that is, you know, for like, uh, nurses and, you know, the administrator, if they work X amount of hours, which is over the, the eight-hour typical workday. I would imagine that in most circumstances, they're not able to come in and work less the following day, because you always have patients there.
What was the hour you worked for?
Cause the director.
And so, so you can PTO, you're rewarded PTO time, um, and, and for the time that you're putting in.
So I can see the director nursing wouldn't get to do that, but the minister.
Are they salaried?
No, she's.
Well, that's.
No, that's named correct, the director nurse is salaried.
Oh, okay.
It is salaried, okay.
So, so, but let's take an hourly employee, well, that's why they're getting paid hourly.
They get paid overtime, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm, I'm.
A salaried person, you're paid your salary, you get, it's averaged out to be more when you get paid salary, because most salaried people are expected to work more than forty hours a week, that's why they're on salary. That's why most of the time it's not in your benefit as an employee to work salary, to work hourly, because you get the overtime. A salaried person does not get overtime.
That's what I think.
So she's, she's putting in sixty hours a week, let's say, whatever, whoever it is, the director of nursing, doesn't matter who it is. But they're still getting the same amount of money, whereas if I'm an hourly person, I'm getting overtime for that money. So I, I, PTO, it's, I mean, it's.
It's more.
Yeah.
We have it there.
I just want you to know I don't like that.
Really?
I don't.
Well, it's never worked.
She just had a vacation.
I think it's normal state law, but.
What's wrong with calling it vacation?
Do contracts usually have a reference without it being delineated in the contract that they sign? For instance, in, um, in, in A G N I says refers to the, through that policy book.
Yeah, you can have contracts that incorporate my reference, uh, certain provisions, so that you don't have to reorientate everything that's in the, the documents that we're considering.
Okay. And that city thing, both in three and four still, I don't know if that's council or board, it still sounds confusing to me. And then, um, test to decide domain over and shall manage and operate the manor on the city's behalf. Again, we're talking about the manor or who? Evidently it's.
Oh, sorry, is that a question?
Um, yeah, so again, uh, operate on the city's behalf, because the manor isn't a person, so it's, the, the city is the.
Okay, okay. And I, I, if, um, I would be interested to see if there is a policy for, to decide to control workers' compensation claims and abuses. That sounds like, I don't know how you write that up. Julian, do you have that? Do you have that policy to monitor workman compensation expenses and develop as necessary policies and procedures that are designed to control workers' compensation claims and abuses?
We have a workers' compensation policy and Renssberg Insurance Company, yes.
But do you have a policy to control that? So this.
Well, like we have, like, safety measures in place, for example, we have an insurance rep that comes out, like, in the wintertime and does, like, winter safety of how to walk outside in the snow, how to properly move snow. We have lifts, we have, like, today a gentleman was out from Easy Stand to make sure that the staff is aware and how to properly use a lift, so we don't have an injury and not have a work comp claim.
So you have staff education all the time for this?
Yeah. Through, mostly through insurance companies that come out and do those things, yes.
I just didn't know if you had it written down per se, because it seems like that would be very inclusive and complicated.
Our work comp book is this thick.
All right, good, thank you, that should be.
You haven't made it? You haven't made it?
Not yet.
All right.
And so then, I would say that on six A, it should be, um, that should be something, or an authorized agent from the manor to go to the, to take the money to the bank. Otherwise, if Julian's doing laundry, she ain't gonna take money to the bank.
Actually, it gets delivered almost on a daily basis, department has rotate through who's gotta go get the mail or run downtown for anything, and so our, pretty much is deposited daily.
I know it is deposited.
But it's in your, but it's in your contract, so.
That you do it, that only you do it. So to let you out of that duty.
Thanks.
You know, having, but you put money in that bank. And so then, present, said mon, monthly expenses to managers designate a party, the timely approval, is it designated party the board? In six B.
I believe that that would be, forgive me, Julian, Cheryl in the office, I believe that would be her.
So her title was designated party? Does she have a title, Julian?
Designee is probably, it should have been.
Should be designee.
Said designated party.
Okay, I like that better. And then, it sounds like, like C and the rest of us should just be prepare the budget, period. Do you have to go through all that?
You don't have to, no.
Just be calm.
And probably a way that, that could be handled is at the very top on six, it would say the minister shall provide, uh, management services, including but not limited to.
Yeah, it would read better, easier, she would have better, um, definitive towards to do. And then, uh, so on number seven in demunification, is Julian listed extra in the case she does something, she listed on the city's liability and the manor's also?
It would be whatever policy covers manor operations.
Just the manor?
They have their own insurance.
Right, they do, but it just says listed and as additional insured on the liability insurance, what does that mean? Does the liability cover every employee of the manor?
Um, not necessarily, because, uh, since she's the administrator, there's a legal doctrine that basically the, the eight, I wish they had different terms for it, but. I wish they had different terms for it, but you have the kind of the law of master and servant. The servant, uh, creates a tort, the master is liable, uh, for the same. So that's why it's probably designed to indemnify her and provide her on the insurance because she's the administrator. So if something bad happens at the bottom, it could potentially percolate up and hit her.
So that's just, uh, that's a legal thing that needs to just be in there probably? Yes, okay. Then on number eight, I would change that the administrator shall maintain financial records and reports on premises that the manner will shall be open to the inspection of the public at any reasonable time since it's, it's part of the, uh, public entity versus only the manner board. They should be open to the public? Since, I mean, they can come in and ask Courtney to look at anything, right, Courtney?
I mean, they got a public records request as a governmental institution, unless it falls under one of the exceptions, um, we'd be obligated to turn it over.
Yeah, anybody give me that?
So it should be public instead of manner, just only the manner board. This limits it only to the manner board?
I know, but I mean, there's a statute, the public records statute provides that since we're.
So you wouldn't have to have it in here per se?
No.
Okay, that's a legal thing, I think. And then, um, we automatically renew, her, her contract would be automatically renewed and that's just a safeguard in case we don't get around to getting it done like we haven't been, right?
Correct.
And then that either party, this agreement may be terminated by either party, is that the city and the manner board or city and Julian? Who is the either party?
So it'd be Julian or the city.
Okay. And then that waiver of rights of hearing, this, this louder mill, which really is required by all public, uh, employees so that they can give their side of it correct? And that, does that say she can have that, but she doesn't have to have a hearing? Is that what that essentially says?
No, it, it, so provided that we have this termination method that's put in this contract, she waives any right to a louder mill style hearing. So it's to, to try to avoid having some type of proceeding if the employment, uh, arrangement is terminated or whatever.
Well, so that louder mill is her time to talk and give her side?
Yeah, it's, it's basically like a due process type hearing.
But she gets to do that, right? Or is this, it says she's waiving it?
Correct.
So she doesn't get to do it?
Yes, she does not.
Okay, that's, that seems kind of bad if she isn't in agreement. How is she gonna say she's not in agreement?
Well, that's why we got that severance package, that if she's terminated without cause, um, then there's compensation provided after the termination date. So it's kind of, it's a, a bargain exchange. Since I get this severance package, I'm not gonna do a louder mill.
So even if she thought she was right, we're gonna pay you six months and then just go away and don't ever talk to us? Is that what you're saying? Pretty much.
That's, I guess, the, the bargain is the employee saying, I'm, I'm gonna waive my louder mill style hearing right in exchange for that.
Doesn't have to.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could take out the severance, um, provision.
Yeah, but Julian's hard.
That was brought up by the board last year, that was not something I asked for it, it's the board.
Doesn't have to sign it.
Yes, she does.
So.
What, what did you just say?
I said, she doesn't have to sign it. Right?
You're talking about disagreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
She can just take the severance.
You're, you're asking that she won't, she can't say anything, or person, I'm sorry.
If she takes the severance pay, she doesn't get to say anything.
Right, but I'm saying is, if you don't want severance pay, then you can probably have an argument.
Yeah, so I, I think we're trying to say, we could delete section twelve and eleven. And then the, the procedure would be if there is a, a termination, uh, without cause, then she would be entitled to a louder mill style hearing.
Yep.
Well, I'm telling you, if I was fired and I thought I was right, I'd want that louder mill. I would, wouldn't you, Julian? If you thought you were being fired without cause, wouldn't you want to give your side of it? I hate to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer. You don't want to.
I just something the board wanted in there last year, they put it in, they asked for it, that's what Kyle was directed to do and this was what the board wanted.
Well, I'm just trying to understand it, that's all.
That's a good point.
Um, so the assignment, um, may not be assigned, this contract cannot be assigned to anybody else without the prior written consent of the city. Why would we have that in there? If it's not her contract, wouldn't you just do a new one for another person? You wouldn't add all of this to the next one automatically?
Technically under contract law, um, unless there's a provision that expressly says that you can't, then you can assign your contractual rights and obligations. So like, let's say you and I, uh, we signed a contract that I'm gonna mow your lawn. I could then assign the rights to that contract to person X. And then you have to pay to person X and person X is mowing your lawn. But if you really like the way I mow your lawn, you'd put in the contract that I can't assign it unless you agree to it, because I might get, you know, you might like person X, but maybe I go to person Z who's a really shady person and doesn't get around to mowing, but, you know, once every other month. So that's, that's kind of the reason for that.
So that's just a little thing too. All right. I would like to suggest that the board, who's going to do their evaluation, should at least have some kind of performance improvement plan to go along so that they know what they're talking about and have some behavioral expectations in order to have some basis for the evaluation that they're going to do. Would be my recommendation with the changes that you've noted in here. Am I objection to this?
I second that, and also I wanna add for six D, says recruit, employ, train, but who is she training if she's not a nurse? And those are all nurses, how?
I think you're trying to say that whoever the supervisor of that department would do the training, not the administrator?
Yeah, so like the head of the department would, um, do the training, Julian would do the training.
Can I?
But she's gonna sell.
Insert after employee oversee training?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I have like a clean cut motion of what exactly you want to do?
Oh, God, no. Cause I'll never find one.
Well, I mean, are you, are you? You have the changes noted, correct?
I can do my best, um, would you like to attempt?
Well, there was only three or four, actually. That. Well, we talked about, we didn't exactly change all of them. I move that the administrator's employment agreement be changed with those noted to our attorney. And that the recommendation to the board list a performance improvement plan and a behavioral explanation in order to have a basis for evaluation.
So you're sending it back to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Performance of, and what?
Behavioral expectations in order to have a basis for evaluation. I have a note.
Okay. Remind me not to ask for a contract in my position, please.
Well, I think it would be very difficult for Julian to follow this because it's not very clear cut, actually.
Can I ask a question? Then how are, how long are we gonna prolong this with her?
She still has a contract, so she still is, um, getting paid, just not the proposed and I didn't do anything with that, I just, that's not part of my motion, I did not make a change on the salary, that's up to the council.
But you're saying that we can't give her what we wanted to until we have an evaluation? We are only gonna do an evaluation for a month, or what?
Well, your policy for the board is you're supposed to be doing an evaluation every year. Otherwise, you're just saying, let's just give her some money.
We evaluate her every month we meet, we evaluate her every month we meet, if we didn't like what we did.
But you have to have a document, you have to have a document that says she did an evaluation.
So I'm asking you, are we going to have to go a whole year before we give her this raise?
It depends on what the council wants to do with the raise tonight. I didn't address the great, the raise, I only addressed that I don't agree with that raise, but I did not make any recommendation in my motion about that.
So I think your motion is saying forthgoing.
Yes, you'll have to decide that.
If we pass it.
So you're saying for next year, not this year?
Correct, forth.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, or just say yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now I'm confused.
I don't think you know.
So are you changing, are you changing things in the actual contract that you wanna pass tonight?
Yes.
Can we show you with recommended changes?
That's what the motion is with recommended changes, cause Kyle wrote them down, I saw him.
Do, do, do you have to send that back to the manner board though?
Yes.
So you're not.
You're not approving it?
You're recommending the changes for the manner board to.
Yes.
So we're not approving the contract, you're recommending to send it back to the manner board with the changes that Kyle gets to whip up and then they're gonna say, yep, we like it, send it back and then you'll approve her contract next month.
Right.
Maybe.
If the council approves it or decides to.
Yes.
So what date is her contract supposed to be agreed upon or bid on?
I've talked about not over.
Okay, so.
Well, February one.
February one is the effective date.
February is effective. Is effective.
But it is continued as is until approved one.
It continues as is.
I, I understand that. My question is, when you approve her raise, if you so choose to do that, will she get retroactive pay based on this ongoing, whenever?
Whatever.
If it's approved already, yeah.
Yes, making sure.
Yep.
Or just like you had to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor?
I second. Create a motion.
Stay in the back? The motion to stay in the back. Okay. Second.
I second.
Okay, Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Kyle, what do you feel on all this as a attorney?
Uh, so basically there would be two ways to, to handle this. Um, you could send it back and give me time to put these revisions in, or I can do my best to say, like draw a handgrudging amendment that incorporates all these, but, uh, it would be a little messy.
Yeah. And the manner board suffers the seat, don't they? If you're gonna change your contract?
Well, I suppose since, um, they kind of, uh, do the contractual work with Julian, we're more kind of like a, uh, I guess you could say a confirmation body, uh, to ratify what they adopted, so procedurally that would probably be best. If you don't wanna accept it as is.
The rest of the council can, I just can't.
All right, aye.
Agree. Judy.
I hope every other, every other contract that comes before this council gets the same scrutiny that this one did.
Yeah.
Aye.
Appreciate that too.
Goodness, that's.
Agreed. Okay, sixteen. Discussion action ordinance number one zero zero seven, create purchasing card policy for city and manner use.
Kyle, you want to put this one?
Yes, uh, so, um, this is just for basically, uh, purchasing cards, uh, so employees can use those to, uh, acquire things on behalf of the city. I'll just dig a little bit from prior policies that I prepared because we have the, the manor, so I kind of split it off, made the, sorry, Courtney with the clerk, coordinator of all purchasing cards for city employees other than manner employees. And then I made Julian the, the coordinator for manner employees. Now, uh, I don't know if, I should assign that to a different person, but that's, uh, how I broke it out, cause I figured Courtney would be looking over things from the, the city maintenance folks and, uh, how they look at the manner employees. I didn't have a hard number for section seven, um, but I, I did feel like we should put a cap. Right now, it's under five thousand dollars per transaction or ten thousand dollars per month for all key cards held by the city. I didn't know how many times people use cards, um, to acquire things on behalf of the city or the manner, as opposed to things that we just have written our contracts for.
The manner has a fifteen hundred dollar a day limit on their card just for a transaction, just to protect from fraud and things like that. There's been a time or two, an emergency purchase, I've had to call for a little, up me a little bit so I can go buy a B3 or something. I got you saying monthly.
On a month, ba- monthly basis, ten thousand dollars doesn't hit it, okay. And then for the city, that's fine, okay. I could lower it, it's just, that's, I, I lifted that from you and Alice, that's policy, so.
Will this be a new card?
So I have, I have questions since I'm gonna be in charge of this now, I guess. I wanna know what's going on. So are we, if I'm assuming this, if I'm reading this correctly, we have to go out and find what card we want to use now? Like what card we wanna go with? Am I, is that what I'm gathering here?
Do you have an existing one or?
I have a debit card, that's it. I do not have a credit card for the city, I have a debit card, that's it.
I, I, I still think it would fall under that debit card. So it's basically any type of transaction that, um, some city employee is offering some type of card to complete that transaction, not just taking it on credit or, you know, have an existing contract.
So my thing though is I, I'm a little wary of handing a debit card to just a random person to go use it. So is it, like, are we supposed to go find a credit card to utilize for this? Like, so we have a natural credit card?
Because credit cards.
Credit cards are easier.
You don't wanna go in with a debit card, I don't know. I think it should be a credit card just for this, just for city employees. For instance, Jeremy and I go to Cardy, we're driving the city vehicle, we have to stop and get gas, Jeremy has to pay for gas, come back, turn the receipt over to Courtney and you're reimbursed, which is senseless to me.
But you can just get a debit card.
What's that?
You can just get a debit card.
But here's my thing, I, I don't like debit cards when you guys are like gone, because that comes out of the city's account. So if somebody would get our number and we don't see right away that they've taken our information.
That's with the bank insurance.
Well, correct, but that's a lot of work for Courtney, you have to go back.
I get a text if there's random charges on our debit card that are not, like if I use it for a company that we've never used before, they'll text me.
And can the bank can set up a?
But I, I would feel better with it not being, not being a debit card, a natural use credit card, because I don't, I don't want it coming, you know what I mean? And let's, here's the thing, like, if I have a debit card, I have to have that receipt right away, otherwise our bank statement is not gonna balance. So if somebody forgets to give me a receipt, we have a problem, you know what I mean? So like, I would rather it be a credit card and it's a separate thing for, I know that it's just, they're just using it for gas or using it for whatever supplies or whatever we're doing, but I don't have to worry about, well, why did I have a random two hundred dollars come out of the checking account that everybody owns for?
And like the city at Northwork has.
Does our, our bank can offer a credit card, correct?
I'd say the nice thing about credit cards, we can code it and then we pay it.
Right.
We cannot code it that way, so it just got like the general account, right, so we can.
If you pay it off every month, then we no interest paid any.
When you get charged for purchase, does that, you know, like if you have, on your credit cards, you don't get interest on, I don't know what that is, cause I never read that book, but if you get a purchase, then you get some, uh, interest charged? No?
Reward?
I'm confused.
Rewards or what are you talking about?
No, not rewards. If you.
After so long, you get an, an interest charge or an interest?
If it's purchase stuff versus, like if you bought a pot versus a, a gallon of gas, you would be charged extra for the pot, cause it's a purchase.
Oh, some, yeah, I see.
I don't get it.
Like, like we, are you talking about like how we, the city, are, are charging people to use our credit card?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, but, but if I use my personal one, have to reimburse it, that thing still goes on there. I shouldn't have to reimburse it, you'd still get, so you have to pay for that. Does that make sense?
It's probably a loop thing, anyway.
Do you understand that though? So, so if I use my card somewhere, my personal card, and it's forty dollars, and it's, comes up to be forty-two fifty, because there was a transaction fee, the city can't pay me back forty-two fifty, because there's no reason why I would have to pay forty-two fifty, or or two fifty for that. Is that, is that what you're asking?
No.
No.
It's okay, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
The manor uses it quite often, I'll be honest with you, because downtown, like if they need candy for bingo, I mean, I, they have to come get it for me, they take it, they bring me the receipt immediately back, Cheryl logs it, we're utilizing it probably more than the city does. I mean, yeah, we go to a random meeting, they fill up with gas, you know, before or after, just kind of like what they're doing, but we're using it, and sometimes um, that's how the Amazon account, I was able to set up tax exempt, um, it's running it through there now, so you'll see some purchases being done through there. So it's, ours is used a lot.
It's a credit card, right, Julie?
Is yours a credit card or a debit card?
It's through Midwest Bank, so I just think it's an debit.
I agree with Courtney, I'd rather have a credit card, so I don't get a surprise in the bank.
And you never know with those, you know, the scammers, how they can steal the.
With the bank, it's very good, there's been numerous times they've called me immediately when they're seeing something that's going on, that they think is fishy too. I mean, our bank is excellent, I guess.
I think she's asking the shit, right, to we, for us to go out and look for a credit card and get one, I think is what you're, so we, that's what we're doing, yeah.
I just wanna like,
I think you should.
I'm not gonna hand a debit card over to somebody to travel to Lincoln for three days, like that's.
Is that a general consensus, or do you need a motion for that?
General.
I'm just trying to figure this out.
So will you get, will that credit card be used for every department, every city employee?
Your city.
You have your own, don't you? No, I, I, no.
You guys have Casey's fuel cards.
I got a Casey's fuel card, whoa.
What else you need?
Absolutely nothing, Craig, because I don't, I'm not a city maintenance guy, so I, I don't get nothing, man.
Just for the city guys.
They, they won't have me there.
So, if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, like section nine, so, I mean, right now, like if they're registering for conferences and stuff, I'm, I'm paying for all that, like they're not giving that. Um, so what I'm gathering right here is, they're basically gonna use the card for gas, because we already have a per diem rate established with the city, for meals. So they should not use that card to pay for their meals, correct?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Okay, so like, we're just gonna have to make some really good rules, like.
We, what per diem rate?
It's forty dollars a day.
So if you go out to eat, you have to get forty dollars a day?
That's what you're, you're gonna reimburse about forty dollars a day.
So you can either eat one good meal, Jeremy, or you can eat two okay ones.
No, no, I think, I don't, I don't think it's the same, so like, some, I think per diem rate is, some cities have, you eat breakfast, you say, yeah, I ate breakfast, they give you like ten dollars for breakfast, because then you start to be doing the reimbursement thing, which is what this was trying to get away from, right? How's that work out?
Or you can pocket the rest of the money.
That's what I, I thought.
That's what I'm saying, per diem, so that's not a true per diem rate, she's saying that we have a maximum amount, when actual per diem a lot of times is, you get twenty-five dollars if you eat.
You turn in your receipts, and you get up to forty dollars per day.
Right, yes.
Yeah, that's not per diem rate though. A per diem rate is a set amount per meal.
We get forty dollars a day per diem, and that's the way we look at it, we go to the conference. So when we go to the conference, for example, we're there three days. I know that if I go out to eat somewhere, like, I don't know, what's that steakhouse by the UNIS Center, but I can eat forty dollars worth of food, and then anything after that, I pay for.
I, so like Julie's saying, like if it's per diem, the way I've heard from people is, you're out, you, you have three meals this day, because you're out all day, here's a forty dollar check. So if you eat ramen noodles, for four dollars total, you pocket thirty-six dollars. But, so that's not per diem, that's a maximum amount, that's not per diem, that's not what per diem is.
Usually the idea for per diem is, we're just gonna give you a flat rate, you don't have to keep a track of your receipts, and stuff like that, it's just, you didn't pay that much.
I don't know if that's legal according to, with the recent audit.
Every city that have per diem, they do, yeah, per diem rate.
That is true.
Because they don't do, they don't do receipts in that way, they don't.
We got away from that, because I'm pretty sure some people were never eating, and then they were just getting forty bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
They were bringing their own peanut butter and jelly and just taking their forty dollars.
That's what per diem is, yeah, if you don't eat ramen noodles, you still collect your money, I mean, that's.
Can I get a copy of this, when you're also done?
Oh, of this, yeah.
I don't have one.
Yeah.
It's kind of the same thing of like, per diem mileage, you know, if you give me sixty cents per mile, and you're driving a little previous, as opposed to the, you know, Shelby GT five.
So, what is the conclusion on that?
We don't have a per diem rate.
Okay, we don't have that.
Probably, I would say we probably have a maximum amount spent on food in a day, right, but not natural per diem.
Right.
So that means they can't go out and use the card and go, hey, I had supper at seventy-five dollar steak, you'd be like, well, it's not gonna happen, you get your, yours, thirty-five dollar back.
Well, they, yeah, they just need to know they can't use the card for that, they still need to turn in their receipts, like they normally would.
So, you guys don't eat very well when you're out. Sixteen dollars for a, eighteen dollars, they don't eat very much.
Most of the time, if they stay over late, the hotel has breakfast, so you're only paying for lunch and dinner, but anyway. Back to, do we want this or not?
I can tell you, when I got audited, this is what they asked for. That's why it's being brought to you guys, as a city and the whole, because they ask for our policy, and so Kyle and I worked with one.
Okay.
Um, but then we felt that the whole city should have one to protect everybody, so it, it is something they are looking at.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Great idea.
I know, it's really, Bob, when Bob and I go.
Yeah, that's a great idea. There's no reason for anybody to have to pay the gas, and then they gotta turn it in to Cardy, and she's got her own check, it's just.
Does it look like less work for you?
I don't know at this point, I really couldn't tell you.
It would be, because I'd all be on the card.
It'd be on the statement, then.
That you still have to turn in receipts, so that she can.
I gotta justify that, that's what you did, so you still have to give me a receipt.
But she's only making one payment a month, too.
Right.
Instead of twenty.
That's true, everyone was out to you, and I checked everybody, it's a one.
She's getting an itemized list.
And just because we have the policy, doesn't mean that we need to go get a card. We can keep doing it the same way as we have always done it.
So you're gonna do a, are you gonna do just a gas credit card, Courtney? Is that what you guys are talking about? Like, when you guys go to the conference center? Or go to the conference? Because we just have Casey's, and we can only do gas, so when we go to our trainings, we're paying everything out of pocket, turning our receipts into Courtney, and then we get reimbursed.
In thirty days, approximately.
So, I mean.
This would be where you'd go, you'd be able to use a card.
Is this where, but, we don't always, there's not always gonna be a Casey's, I'm just saying, like.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you, you'd have, you'd be able to have access to the credit card, is what we're saying.
Oh, we, are.
You're a city employee.
Yeah, you're a city employee.
So, so not everyone's gonna have, where I'd see it, not everyone's gonna have a card at all times, but it's like, hey, I'm going to the conference, here's.
I don't wanna hold it ever.
No, you have to come get it for me before you go somewhere. You don't get to keep it in your pocket.
I thought you would mention that, no, it doesn't pertain to you guys, it's just for the city, so.
Because I think they were joking with you.
You were saying.
I was joking. I know that I am. I am the city, everybody, I understand that.
I know my dad, he goes to conferences, and he has a credit card, and they're only allowed it like twenty dollars, because I'm just.
Oh, we're, we're doing it.
Okay, let's.
We're doing.
Yeah.
So. So then I'm just supposed to buy whatever.
Would you like to add a motion that you may reset the kind of card and purchase whichever you think is great?
Can, can you go through the bank and see if they would do a credit card?
I'll put it on the list for this week.
Or Jeremy, can you call away?
Yep, we'll figure it out.
So you want a motion?
And pass for table.
I say, Tyler, yes, no?
Yep, I'll make a go. Motion to approve ordinance one thousand seven, creating purchasing card policy for city and ma- city and manor use.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Aye.
Davis.
We need to waive the second, third reading of ordinance one thousand seven. Motion.
I'll second.
Sarah.
Aye.
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 Seventeen, discussion action ordinance number one zero zero eight, procedure for vacancies of the office of the mayor.
What's that mean?
I don't know.
If he's gone on a vacation or something, we can have the meeting, somebody else is in charge.
You were in charge, Karine would be in charge.
Yes, she is, because she's a president.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion.
The, the reason this popped up is, when I was doing the, the league model ordinance, there is a citation in there, um, because in the, the legal, how the league organizes their code sections, they have separate uh, code sections for vacancies for mayor and city council, whereas ours was put together. So I just split out the mayor, so we're not adding anything new, it's just, I split it out, because when these league model updates come, it's easier if I have our code book match that. So, not, not trying to uh, push you out, Bob.
Trying not to take it personally. Pretty obvious though.
Without pushing Bob out, the motion to pass ordinance one thousand eight, procedure for vacancies of the office of mayor.
I'll second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Aye.
Green.
Jody.
Aye.
Making motion to waive second, third reading for ordinance one thousand eight.
I'll second.
Procedure for vacancies of the office of mayor.
Second. Sarah.
Aye.
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 Number eighteen, council comments. Anything?
I've talked all night, I'm done.
Uh, well, I do a little bit, and maybe this isn't the place. But, and Kyle will stop me if I can't say stuff. But what happened to the, uh, the old agenda with abolishing the manor board? Can anybody explain to me what's going on? Because I'm not downtown, and I'm not talking to anybody. Or do we need to, you and I just talk, don't we?
Yeah.
Because sometime I think we probably know for the public, uh, um, something, because I'm sure just seeing letters of the editor is all I'm seeing. I'm not getting any other information, and then all of a sudden, uh, this agenda changes. So, uh, a little explanation, I guess, kinda tired of things being hidden.
I called you about this before. We did not have a free force council vote.
But it's tabled, and now it's not on the agenda, so that's what is questioned, I see.
That's, yeah. Yeah, correct. The only other conversations I've ever had, with Julie, you called me the one time, and I told Bob about that. And Karine, you, you did call me, uh, when I was on vacation, and informed me about some stuff.
Yep.
But no decisions was ever made, no nothing.
I think procedurally, um, since that ordinance was tabled at the last meeting, a uh, council member could move to bring it from the table.
Okay.
Um, but if, if no one requested the same, then it wouldn't need to be included on the agenda, because it just kind of sits there until there's a motion.
Okay, is it always gonna sit there, or do I need to bring it back and get it out of there?
I did ask Courtney when I sent my email, these are the things that I, I reviewed the city council and said it was tabled. I have no direction from my board, I don't have any direction from the council. This is where it's kind of left, and I left that to Courtney. So I did talk about it.
Okay, I mean, I just confused on everything.
Yeah, so I mean, Robert's Rules of Order, you can bring something back from the table, the meeting at which it's tabled, or the following meeting.
Okay, then after that?
Yeah, I mean, there could be, I'm just throwing this out there, not suggesting that anyone's gonna do it, but someone could bring a new ordinance, whatever, it could be now like one thousand nine, do the same thing. Um, it's just that particular deal now that has been dropped from the table, there would be a, a different procedural move that would have to be made to bring it back. But that's, I think that's the, the reason that it's not on the agenda, is apparently there's nobody that requested to bring it from the table, so then, uh, there's no need to consider it.
Yeah, it was on the original agenda.
Yeah.
My decision to take it off.
Okay.
And one other thing.
Yeah.
Because I felt, last time we talked about it, it was a discussion that didn't even happen again.
Okay, I missed February's meeting, so I'm, I'm catching.
You and I got to talk too.
Okay, and, and, and my last comment is, is the, since I didn't get to talk February meeting, that uh, the audit, I thought it went good. Thank you forever from the state, or from this town submitted it. I thought it was a great audit. We learned a lot, so, yeah. Appreciate whoever stuck their head out and did that.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
Good, Tyler, thank you. Any else, can you?
Well, I just, I think that our uh, administrator and city clerk would need to have a round of applause almost for getting all that information. It's nice to hear that this is the best audit he's had since, for seven years.
Courtney, she's information here.
And Melissa, Melissa, I did a lot of work to get the audit going.
We did a good job.
Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was the easiest audit report that I've been able to follow.
Yeah.
We've got some big, big talks coming up, I have a very long.
Anything else, any public comments?
Do I have to come up there, or can I just talk here? Okay.
Oh, really?
It's okay.
It's early at fifteen.
Objection to that. Everybody else sat down and talked, like, other than when, you know, Julie did her thing.
I just had.
And that's all I have.
I just, I found one here. Why did we get this add-on to the manor? Okay, because personally, I think what we talked about was just bringing mainly the washroom upstairs, and, and I do totally agree with that. And where we're gonna put it, we're gonna take out some area, right? Okay, so, but we're adding on eight more rooms. And then we're gonna put east hall back into regular rooms for the manor, or is the eight rooms gonna be for assistant living? Or are these gonna be assistant living, and the new eight rooms assistant living?
New.
Long, long term.
Would be like number fourteen through eight, seven?
Seven.
Seven will be nursing home rooms.
Okay.
Used to be west.
So then, are they gonna be private rooms, or are they gonna be semi-private?
They'll be private rooms, and we'll take, the, the thought is, the last four rooms on north, and last four rooms on east already have a private bathroom, so those will be just private rooms sent to. So now we've got nice, big private rooms at the end of north, and the east, and then those eight.
So are they gonna be different pricing then?
It's up for discussion, yeah.
Because they have to be, for what those look like, to what we have to offer over on the manor side.
Yeah, I mean, that, nothing has been discussed on that yet.
Well, the reason why, I'm kind of, because as you all know, I'm the one that does referrals. And I'm having a hard time filling these right now. And the reason why, and, and I talked to you two about it, is a lot of people don't want to spend the money to come up there. They would rather take care of their family at home. And then you also have the fight with av- advantage plans. Which we have fights with, having coming into our manor, and having to pay with the prices, and having to go with that. I'm not understanding how we're thinking with that being more rooms, i- i- and different price, and how that's gonna really bring more people here, because they're already not wanting to, like, they'd rather go to swing beds, because they consider that better than coming to the manor, because we do. I mean, we do have that name of last place to die, where you're coming to. So I mean, I'm fighting with all this, and now I'm adding more rooms on.
We're not adding more rooms.
I'd say, would you rather, if I'm going to the manor, I'd rather be in my own private room.
And they do, because you gotta remember, when they come in skilled, they only get paid for a semi-private room. They have to pay extra to get a private room.
Not for skilled, not for part A.
For part A, they, it reads that they cannot have a private room, it does not pay for a private room.
We can't, we can't fill extra in private, in a part A state.
If they want a private room, we've always had it, that they pay five hundred extra dollars for a private room.
I mean, we might be talking at twenty, twenty-five, thirty, we haven't even considered those things. We're at thirty-six out of thirty-nine today, our census as well.
Yeah.
I mean, Laurel today.
And not over in the assistant living part, not over in the assistant living part, that's where I'm having problems right now.
Sure, I mean, we are, we're budgeted at eleven, we're sitting at ten, we do have a thirty-day notice that was given. Um, so we're gonna be at nine at the end of this month-ish type thing, but our census is, well, it's very well.
I mean, it is well, thank you God, but what I'm meaning is, is if you're gonna add all this, it's just gonna make my job just a tad bit harder, I guess. I'm just, I'm sorry.
That's why you make the big money.
Yeah, I wish.
I look at it, Jody, as, as, you know, it's something new. It's remodeling, I mean, the new rooms are being, are gonna be really nice.
It seems that I'm having a hard enough time trying to, I mean, yes, thank God, we do have people that have been taking the private rooms.
Yeah.
Which is awesome, but a lot of them don't also wanna pay that extra money, because they don't wanna lose their farm and have to go unmedicate.
And I also think that they have some really nice.
Farm running into problems too.
You have some really nice new rooms, people are gonna wanna come. I really believe that.
Even.
Do you?
I.
Yeah.
I'm ready to get up there and try.
Oh, come on.
I'm just, okay, I'm just okay. It's fine. I just, I just had questions.
The only thing I'll say about when you deal with architects, cause we've been dealing with them for some other things for the city, is just because you employ their services, it's a very fluid situation. So what your dream is now might not be what actually happens.
Well, all I thought we were doing was to bring out the washer and dryer. Didn't know we were gonna add all the extra.
And, and it, it still might be. You never know. I mean, prices come in outrageous, bond rates go up like crazy. Um, we pulled back on street before cause interest rates. So I would say just because we signed a contract for Clark and Anderson, that means all we've done is spent twenty-five grand on somebody to show us what may or may not be built. So I'm, I'm not saying, that's not, not the goal.
All I'm saying is that I'm having a hard time.
Yep.
I'm not saying that those. So it's just.
Does it fluctuate all the time, Jody?
Oh, yeah.
So it could be whether it's a new building or not, it's still gonna fluctuate, right? It's just, and, and I see where you're coming from, but.
Again, we're budgeted at thirty-two, we're thirty-six now. So it's just like.
Like, yeah, like Bob and Tyler said, you know, newer room, people probably will come for that. I. Maybe not.
I will, but we had a lot, we've had a couple of people from Plainview that have been longtime citizens here, you would think wanna stay here and have children to go by their family. Which is understandable too. I get it. That's where I'd wanna be too.
Right.
I mean, so you can't, it, I, I, I get it. I wa, I'm looking forward to the new rooms, but it's just.
More work.
Well, I'm just trying to think of.
The, the pros and the cons.
Pros.
Looking at all that. Okay.
Your turn.
My turn. Okay. I should've brought a pen, cause I feel like there was a lot of things I wanted to talk about on event seven meetings. So if you don't know me, I'm Pam, the salary director of nursing. So with hers, just kind of whatever, you know, kind of, I visited with Julene a little, a little bit about this addition. And, you know, working with large corporations at times, I do feel they have Medicare rooms. Like, you know, we don't have a lot because our hospital does a lot of the swing bed. They are probably a little bit more aggressive with the therapies than I feel like when the therapists come into our facility. I don't feel they're as aggressive if they don't stay on a part A stay. And if you have those part A people and they're complex. That's, that's good revenue because, you know, you're getting the, the highest level. And so that really is what brings in the dollars. Our local hospital does take a lot of that away by doing the swing bed. So I agree with that part of it. But there's still opportunity. And I do feel like every other corporation, their business moves, they do these big private rooms as their. Medicare suites is what they do. Do we have to name it Medicare suite? Probably not. But I do feel when people go into the private rooms. That we do have and they're so small, I feel like it, it kind of puts us one step ahead of our competitors by having it. So I'm for it. Not that I want to give Jody or anybody else for that matter, any more work to do. But I think that it is a great opportunity, a great investment that we potentially do, just to kind of keep us competitive with area. Because I think we're getting to that. I agree with Tyler. I want my own private room. I mean, I already know how I'm gonna have my care plan and how I'm gonna make sure I get my own private room when I'm older. And I'm not gonna. I, I probably told them, but I'm not gonna say in this meeting what I would do, but I would want my own private room too, you know? I mean, I'm a social person, but I also like my alone time. So that's my little skill there.
Pam, do you think that residents are staying longer or shorter amounts of time in the nursing home? When they were in nineteen sixty-eight when it was built?
Yes.
I wasn't born yet nineteen sixty-eight, so I'm not sure.
I worked. I agree, but I, cause I worked there at eighty-four and families came up there right away. Where now they hold on to them as long as they can. They're back, we had a couple just come in for a mitts, that the family didn't realize that their dimension had gotten that bad. Cause they allowed them to stay at home that long. And it's not to take them out of environment that they know and put them in one that they do not know that you realize that. And I think it's because that's.
If you pay more for a private room for a short, for a year or two, as compared to six or seven, that would be a big income. Buster is what I'm saying. So I don't know if they are staying longer.
I just don't. Yeah, I mean, they're already upset with how much it costs for a private room. I just don't know if we, with those being newer and nicer. And we have to probably put up a better price on it, because those will have their own bathroom and shower and that attached.
And that's something that.
That will, they want to pay that kind of.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's just, that's just a question too that I have in there too. Pros and cons, pros and cons. I'm, I'm okay with it. It just, just putting it out there is all I'm saying.
And I do feel like, you know, um. Every place is expensive. I mean, if you do comparisons with as far as long-term cares, especially in the bigger cities and that kind of stuff, you're gonna see so many different kinds of rates and that kind of stuff. But I do feel they do look for, like, we have one resident right now who has the semi-private as her whole room, because, you know, the rooms that we have are so small. And I agree, like, you know, having troubles with advantage plans and those types of things. Well, as we all know, like, there's a lot of times in that you heard even prior to open enrollment for Medicare last year, like. Being encouraged not to do advantage plans. I mean, when my mom got Medicare age, I'm like, I'm helping you with that. You will not do advantage. They make it sound great, but yes, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work for hospitals. It's a lot of work for nursing homes. If you do have somebody who's a referral that has an advantage and plan. And if it's not, if we're not a provider and those types of things, I'm hoping either advantage plans get better or they just disappear. Is kind of the thing. But I still feel like, yeah, it, we'd have to look at the rates, but that's something that's probably a long ways down the road. That's nothing that you'd probably discuss in the initial process of deciding whether or not you're going to do the addition and that kind of stuff. But I, sorry, Jody, I'm for it. I, I think it's a great.
Well, I'm not saying I'm for it. All I'm just saying is there's a lot to think about.
Yeah. Oh, no, absolutely. With anything, there's a lot to think about, I'm sure. So just because I, you know, so I get home and see if my son's daughter's out of surgery, I just wanted to say, just a couple of things. I said I should've brought a pen, cause there's a lot more things that I wanted to say. But I, I agree with you, Joe. Like, the, the contract was due February first. Out of courtesy for Julene, I feel like, yes. Time-wise, they ensure they've done more appropriately there. And I do agree with Jody regarding the whole. I mean, I feel every contract should get this scrutiny. Every contract should be gone through very thoroughly. So. Nothing wrong with going through the contract thoroughly, cause every contract should be done that way. One of the questions that I did have, just because I guess I'm not completely aware of how things panned out last year with the contract. It was my understanding with the contract renewal date last year, that a performance evaluation was supposed to be done. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
So, I agree. So if the performance evaluation wasn't done prior to February first. That kind of would bring a delay. So not sure why the performance evaluation wasn't done to begin with, so that way it could be done timely. Does that make sense?
Who does it?
The board.
The board.
So in like, you know, with every, um, employee of the facility, we have an evaluation process to go through. And that's how our wage is determined, whether it's one percent, two percent, three percent, four percent, cause it maxes out at four percent. And so I'm not sure, so the board does the evaluation?
Yes.
And not the staff? Cause I was under the understanding last year.
They have surveys. The surveys that go into the evaluation.
So the survey that was done in June or July is technically that?
Part of that evaluation.
Okay. Alright. And so that's reviewed also by the city council?
No.
The board.
Huh?
The board does it and they make their recommendation.
Okay.
I think that the city council should see the board's evaluation, cause we don't know.
Well, there should be something I would think in a written, you know, I mean, I think every employee has to have their written little thing. And so like, you know, um. With everybody we do, like, every employee, we put something out, so the staff can evaluate their coworkers. And then, of course, then the supervisor then kind of finishes that out. So I didn't know how the performance evaluation was done, but I feel like, um, like obviously, so it was done. No? Okay, I don't know. Thanks for that.
The surveys were done.
The surveys were done, but not the performance evaluation. Okay.
I thought she was saying yes.
It will happen.
Does the manor locate all the employees up there, their evaluations to them before they make the recommendation, whether they get a raise or not? No?
Julene does the final. So like, like with my, with the nursing department, I do the evaluation. The employees all, um, fill something out. I fill in the little, you know, the I, the U, the E, the EE, whatever. Um, and then. Review it with the employee and then she gets that. And then she determines based off of that scoring, what increase they get. Is how it is at the moment. So I just wasn't sure how it went and I was just confused. And there's probably a lot more things that, like, he let me borrow his pencil. Um, so I could at least write a few notes, but, um, there's probably other things too with other areas that was all I could think of. So, that's all I got.
I'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two things real quick. Won't take that long. I promise you, Tyler. I promise you. So I forgot to add, um, as keep the pace. Andrew and I have been asked to police the school during drop-off and pickup, because driveways have been being blocked. So we both have been doing that as much as we possibly can. And it, it has happened probably six, seven times. So what I have done is I've not, and this gets them more than a ticket, I make them leave the line and go to the back.
Okay.
And if, and if that doesn't work, then they get a, they get a ticket. And I, I tell them that when we go, you know, like, when we have a discussion. Seriously, I mean, you know, cause a couple of the folks that live in the houses that are blocked have called highly irate. And I think, Bob, you got one of those phone calls. And I get it a hundred percent. So we are working on that. I had the superintendent put in the message on Sunday to please. Folks, when you're picking up your kids, don't block the driveways while either somebody else is picking them up or they're just not passing all the information. So we are monitoring that.
I got a phone call.
Oh, go ahead.
I talked to you and you took care of it.
Yes. Yeah, it's done. So, we're still working it.
So, yeah, I mean. Yep.
And look who's beat you hat, cause I live right on the corner. Like, people are actually blocking the stop sign. So it's like, I have to go like out into the street to be able to see if anybody is coming. Cause I live right on the corner.
And to touch on that, I just happened to be up there one day when somebody was like, they thought that the intersection was an actual parking spot. I'm like, you've got me. So guess what? They pulled out and went to the back of the line. So we are really working on it. This is the two of us. So we are trying to do the best that we can with that. So most people kind of listen to what we tell them or they get a, they get a parking ticket. I mean, we are working that. So it's come along. Um, and then the last thing I wanna talk about is, I don't know if you guys follow Facebook or watch Facebook, but, um, Derek Hanson lives in the community. And he has been diagnosed with, um, a very aggressive form and rare, uh, type of carcinoma. And I'm not gonna give you the title of it. You can look at it on the flyer, cause I wouldn't know how to pronounce it. But in two months, this is spread throughout his whole body. So he's going through a very, um. Invasive form of chemotherapy and radiation. Today was his second day thinking, right, of the nation. So they're putting on a benefit form. It's April fifth. It's gonna be at, um, Mike Rayford's.
Shop.
Shop. And there's gonna be, you can donate if you want to. We're selling, um, bracelets. There's, uh, tickets for a gun raffle. And then all the proceeds go to the family.
And there's t-shirts.
T-shirts too that are churning out. Um, I don't have any of the photos of the t, I do have my phone, but I'm not gonna pass that around.
And I have, I have some of them printed out, but I mean, there's a vendor account too, whatever. Um, so you can donate, like, or even purchase any of these things. She just wants us to really keep a good.
Yeah.
Of what items people are buying or whatever. Lots of silent auction items. One was just a chicken coop, you know, eggs and stuff, you know, you might want some chickens.
So Dallas Hanson's gonna actually do the auctioneering. And so a lot of people are coming together. He's gonna be thirty-two on March twenty-eighth. And it's just awful young to have to go through.
Just, does he have kids?
No, they do not.
Do not.
Um, Karen, yes, Karen Hanson. Um, Derek is the one who was driving that big, um, oh, what the hell is it called? That big tractor thing that took the lid off of the elementary school and it blew over onto the high school. Derek's the one that was driving that to pull it down. So. He works for Hoffman Construction. So I'm gonna talk to Brooke, take him one of these flyers. It'll be in the papers, you guys can see it, and just get the word out there.
Did you say there's lieder days?
Yeah, uh, raiders, uh, they're gonna donate their time to do a, for band at the.
Six to ten.
Better for this. So you'll get more information on that. Andrew and I are selling tickets too, just so you guys know.
And so am I.
And Pam's too.
Except for Andrew, who's the one that's out.
No. But you have a silver money, so anyway, I, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have any comments?
Yes, yes. So I have to come up here.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Huh? Okay, speaking for the board, um, of the manor, not the C. As, as we've been talking about tonight, right? We have done evaluations this year. There might not be documentation, but let me tell you, this has been an awful year for Julene. It's been terrible. Every meeting has been awful, the way she's spoken to. It's embarrassing. So there has been evaluations. If there weren't an evaluation, we wouldn't have brought the contract to the board. We would've said, you're fired. We didn't say that. We brought the contract to the board. We gave her a raise. So saying that, I would like to ask, okay, so if we go back, we document that we did the evaluation this year, we bring it back to you guys. Is that what you want?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Well, that was good. Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else? We'll do a jury.
Motion.